The order, the second monthly meeting of the Hendersonville City Council, July 23rd, 2025. You have an agenda in front of you. Is there anything anyone would like to add to or remove from this agenda? Or motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council approve the agenda as presented.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Ayes have it, we have our agenda. We do have one item on the consent agenda. If there is a motion to approve that.
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion carries and we have that taken care of and can now move on to presentations. All right. Mr. Polly.
All right. Madam Mayor, members of City Council. What you'll start seeing regularly, if you remember last year, I came up here and did a similar presentation. We'd like to do a year end review of strategic plan every year at the July workshop and so we're trying to stick with that cadence going forward. So really, we just want to review the goal areas with you. We're in year two of three-year strategic plan and we want to talk about any significant updates to the plan. What happened the past fiscal year? What's coming up in the next fiscal year? The COAN, cone nomenclature, is anything that's been canceled, off track, at risk, or not achieved in our strategic planning software and our trees or our achievements? And just introduce the next three-year planning cycle process and what you'll see from staff leading into the next year budget. As a reminder, kind of our strategic mindset is that this is really a means to bridge the gap between audacious visions and goals of the community and bringing those to life through a mission-driven and strategic process, keeping future focus impacts at the daily operations level for staff so we know, you know, are we advancing something more meaningful to the community? Leadership that reverse engineers long-term aspirations to impact day-to-day decisions. So this is, you know, John Connet, the manager's office, department heads are thinking about this as we make decisions on the ground day-to-day and avoiding short-termism or just aim and shoot whatever's in front of us at the moment and we're keeping a bigger picture in mind as we advance the community. The general framework is broken out to a vision, mission values, and organizational focus areas. You all have established those going back to 2013 timeframe and those are pretty stable and have kept the course over the past decade or so. We have added in additional goal areas, which we've updated every three years. And so these goal areas is what I refer to as the strategic plan and what rolls into that are all the departmental plans. The police department has a strategic plan, the fire department has a strategic plan, you have a bicycle plan, pedestrian plan. We have plans for everything, so all of that really should be in line with the overall strategic plan. You have an annual budget that gets adopted to set aside resources for advancing these goals. You have KPIs or key performance indicators that are just measures that might indicate how we're progressing in those areas. And then we have the specific goal tracking and that's what we're going to talk about today. So we have a software system that allows us to utilize staff input and staff assigned responsible users to try to advance the different areas of the City Council's strategic goal, strategic plan. And so on this main page and what you have printed in front of you, you can see kind of the overall plan. We're about 58.97% complete with the plan. The goal, really, we know that there are certain things that we won't accomplish. If you accomplish everything in a plan, it's likely not aggressive enough and not as ambitious enough. And so our target is to at least crest the 70% mark by the end of this next fiscal year. We're about at 59% now. And then along the bottom, you can see each plan area ranked by your priority of public safety, number one, all the way down to supporting downtown businesses. And you can see where each of those are in a percent complete scale and then also color-coded for if they are on track, off track, or at risk, at risk being red. There's comments in there and I'll hit on some of those based on the responses from staff related to why those might be different colors than green. Also, overall, you can see about 81 or 50% of the items are on track. About 42 or 25% have been achieved, so about 75% of the plan is on track or achieved at this point, with only 25% being in that cone, off-track, at-risk model. This is just an example of what you might see in the packet. You can see the name of the goal area, the level it is in the plan, its status, where it is. So the strong infrastructure is about 57% complete. Who is it assigned to? Who's the kind of the responsible staff person for overseeing this goal area? And the last comment that was uploaded by staff. And so for each of these, today, I'm just going to go through each area and give you significant updates, anything that might be in that cone area, and then any significant achievements. So starting first with public safety, some significant updates are our hiring challenges, I think. Both fire and police both struggle to continue to maintain that minimum staffing. This is something that isn't just prevalent for the city of Hendersonville. This is statewide and probably national challenges from a competitive pay standpoint of being an employer of choice. And I know we are working towards that, but one key area related to this was the downtown police officer position that was approved in the budget a year ago. We still aren't able to prioritize the hiring of that position because we were prioritizing making sure we fill our existing patrol forces to start. Additionally, we have a traffic unit that would have officers more regularly assigned to that. So when we do have full staffing, more officers will be assigned to the traffic unit as well. And then additionally, a significant update, we do have new downtown security infrastructure installation on August 1st, so we should have that completed before the Apple Festival this year and you should see that going up around downtown in a couple of weeks. On that risk, we talked about staffing levels. The fire department maintaining minimum staffing is something we're regularly juggling as well. And then also, we're working on the vacant property registry, commercial maintenance code update, and burn property procedures. Before I updated this presentation, that was off-track and Lou has gone in and it is on-track now according to Lou, so if Lou has anything to add on that, he can. But we are making some progress there. We have an intern this summer that's been working on some of the vacant property registry work for us. And then lastly, achievements, we have developed performance indicators for Fire Station Three. You'll see data on calls in that area and time to respond in that district and then also tracking the quick response vehicle or the QRV. So the fire department is putting that Tac 9 vehicle in service at certain staffing levels. So far, the QRV has run 32 shifts, running about 35% of the calls when in service, so that's saving maintenance on our larger apparatus. And then one other thing I would highlight in here as well is we're tracking the number of major accidents and our goal is to be less than 15 per month and we have been maintaining that level. You can find that information in the report. From the compensation benefits and staff development side, this was your number two ranked priority. This is largely complete outside of just some resource challenges that we have meeting a living wage goal. So we are leading the position, I think regionally, from our COLA and merit adoption in FY26 budget. We adopted a 4% COLA in addition to the ranging merit, which is averaging about 2.56%. So on average, most employees should see about 6.5% raise in FY26 year. 2.89% of that COLA was for inflation with the remaining 1.1% being living wage catch-up. And we have kind of determined our calculation ranging anywhere in the $23 to $25 an hour range. The living wage for just economics is $23.15 per hour. So we use that for our, what you'll see in the cone area, percent making a living wage. You've got 62% of all job classifications, starting at a higher than a living wage, which is 23.15 per hour, $48,152 annually. And we have about 75% of our employees' salaries are higher than that number currently. And then lastly, the achievements, we have completed the new performance review system and we increased the 401K match to 3% this year. Number three, strong infrastructure, significant updates. I think HALEEN and FEMA can probably be put on top of all of these, but especially the infrastructure and park side of the house. HALEEN and FEMA are a major opportunity for us to keep working through. So I'd say we're in the tultrums of figuring out how to work through FEMA every day here. It is impacting our capacity to do other projects. We have adopted the motor vehicle fee and we just had a meeting today talking about our general obligation bond for transportation project and creating a plan for that. And then we also adopted the stormwater master plan and rates to continue to support stormwater infrastructure, so those are significant updates. In the cone area, the City Hall exterior project has been delayed and the interior repairs are a bit delayed due to the storm. We're trying to make sure we capitalize on FEMA funding related to this. And so we had to go back and look at federal procurement requirements and how we bid the work. And so that slowed things down there and we are also waiting to figure out what might be obligated for City Hall. So we don't want to repair this stairwell and then a rain event happen, take it damaged again without us actually taking a look at the broader issues of the damage to the roof and exterior of the building. Yes?
Was that project already put out to bid and we had already hired a contractor to do that work?
We have a design engineer. I don't think we actually bid it. We got about 90% on documents and then we said, hey, we need to slow this down and make sure they meet FEMA regulation. Anything down there for a second? No. And then resurfacing square footage, we did about 201,000 square feet this year. This is, we're trying to get around 300 to 375, but this is something obviously that we presented on with ADA Transition Plan and all those impacts. We're going to keep working on how much we are resurfacing. If you recall, also a large portion of that went into the 7th Avenue Streetscape project. So we kind of sacrificed our normal resurfacing plans to put more money into completing that streetscape. And then achievements, we finished City Hall first and third floors. We've got the paving plan and fee in place to do that and we have greatly increased our cut efficiency. So the Public Works Street Department has really been working on making sure those utility cuts get repaired in a timely manner. So about 75% of the street or cut work orders are closed within 30 days now with the average time being about 12.5 days to complete a cut repair. Additionally, on the strong infrastructure side, we have water and sewer. So we cleaned 19.3 miles of sewer line this year. Our goal is to up that to 25 and 30 respectively as we start moving forward. We have approximately 200 miles of sewer line in the system. This is to try to address our sanitary sewer overflow goal of reducing those. And then also, we're on track to expand the water treatment plant to 15 million gallons by end of year. Strategic housing plan, y'all are very familiar. We're working on finalizing that plan. We think that will be finalized this fall. And we just have the goal of the Housing Authority Resolution. We know that's off-track mainly because it's reliant on the plan adoption and should be a goal of that plan once it's finished. And I think one major achievement to highlight here is all the zoning text amendments that the Community Development Department has worked on this spring and winter and that you all have approved, have greatly impacted the capacity for the private market to fill more of the affordable housing need through flagpole lots and all those other missing middle approaches that the Community Development Department has worked on. We'll note we have a strategies presentation in August.
August 20.
For the committee.
August 22nd.
Your fifth ranked was growth management and community character. And so this was flagged as at risk. I think the biggest piece here is the no-down zoning legislation has made it really difficult for communities to pursue things like updating UDOs, creating form-based codes, pushing floodplain regulations, any sort of regulation. We've kind of said, hey, let's hold off here. Let's let the legislature figure out what, where they want to go with this law before we jump out in front of anything that would be contrary to their direction. And so that's been listed at risk. Some of the achievements here are the comp plan adoption, if you can believe that was within the last year. And I'll list the zoning text amendments again. And really, for the future, I think this goal area is going to start reflecting more of the Gen H comprehensive plan, short-term priorities, and those will link into this plan. You can see the updates there. For this picture, we typed in like a planner presenting to council and this is what it produced. So guys wearing a bow tie, he looks pretty planner-ish. That's what AI thought of that. Number six, invest in parks. Again, I listed HALEEN and FEMA here. We did kind of direct to push a lot of this bond momentum to focus more in FY29 and the budget process. And above the mud grant, we did not receive that grant. We just got notice of that last week, but it did receive a project of merit designation, which who knows really what it means, but it's.
It means we made it to the Secretary of Transportation's desk.
Okay, so we got somewhere.
We went all the way through the process and did not make the final, final, final point.
Can we resubmit that?
We will reapply. This is supposed to.
It's actually automatically set for reapplication, but we can, they may adjust the criteria or whatever, so we may have to adjust.
And Acusta went through several rounds as well, so.
Yeah, at least two rounds of the.
This is not abnormal. It's actually good that we scored as well as we did.
And they'll reconsider on an annual basis?
When's it?
It's supposed to be this fall.
Oh, okay.
As one of the new notice of funding opportunities.
So we'll keep an eye on this and keep you all updated on this project. Very big project and substantial project if we were to receive that grant. The cone area, so obviously we've kind of canceled issuing a parks bond within this three-year period, but it's certainly something that's still on the radar for the next three-year period. 1% of occupancy tax that we've listed as at risk, I think there's been some discussion around it, but I don't see that something, you know, coming to fruition within the plan period. The South Main Street Park obviously tied to the above the mud grant. Splash pad, disc off, and signage and branding manual, all kind of HALEEN-related impacts. And then achievements, we do have a funding strategy identifying the budget for the bond, which is great. That's a good first step for really any project. Scratch the build grant, I didn't get to update at that point. New bike racks have been installed around downtown. I think we purchased 20 and we've installed 18 new bike racks. South Main Street and Acoustic Connection obviously happened this past year. And then the pickleball courts at Patton opened this past year as well. Enhancing sustainability citywide, significant updates. So we did have some budget constraints related to one of the projects to continue some of the more utility spending efficiency studies and implementation for the police department. It's still on the list, but it just did not make it through the budget process. Majority of this goal area is already complete, greater than 80% complete. Some additions from the sustainability plan have been added in, so this is well underway. Listed in the off-track area were some tree planting goals and data integrity related to canopy studies. And then obviously, the efficiency upgrade is, as I noted, on the police department. We have planted 100 trees, so while that was listed as off-track, we have planted 100 and we do have money from a developer for planting of trees this fall as well. It's all there. Transportation planning, we do have the bond strategy in place that is going to be focused right on the PCI and the ADA Transition Plan, but it's also broadly focused on improving connectivity, improving bike lanes, improving walkability. So we're making sure we're incorporating all aspects of our connectivity strategies within the geo-bond. We have had delays on DOT projects and funding availability. The off-track is in the narrowing of King Street. I believe we have gotten the approval to do it.
Sort of, they agreed to look at it again after I-26 is done.
After I-26, that's right. So we'll look at that again.
After 26 is done?
Yes.
And then that would be something that would be eligible for bond proceeds to make that narrowing of King Street if we wanted to. Achievements, the city traffic impact analysis for new developments, we'll continue to do that with new developments and have our own guidance on that and NCDOT confirmation. So scratch that one, that was a mistyping there. City boards and volunteers, number nine, we are almost done here. So we are holding the annual appreciation dinners and continue to improve those based on participant feedback. And so I believe in October this year, Allison will be doing it, so less hot, similar structure. All right? Thank you. And the Citizens Academy has been slow for us to get started. We are going to start kind of working on how we build that up this coming fiscal year here. We do need to start doing more staff-led training sessions for boards. The achievements is, you know, we still have clarified ordinances related to the tree ordinance and we have held the annual appreciation dinner. So this area is mostly complete outside of that Citizens Academy and training of boards. And then lastly, support downtown businesses, really ending on a high note here. The HALEEN response has been great for downtown. We had our 7th Avenue Streetscape celebration and we're working on a public art and business incubator programs. There's nothing in this section that is within the cone category. And the achievements, just want to shout out to Jamie and their team. We have created the Downtown Opportunity Fund. We've issued $15,000 in pivot grants related to HALEEN recovery, $12,000 related to facade grants, $6,000 for public art grants, and loans in the amount of $1.2 million for the Opportunity Fund. So a lot of downtown business support going on and really something to celebrate. So where do we go from here? We will be going out for community input this fall to talk about what it looks like for the next three years, so FY27 through FY29. And then staff, city council, and a focus group will work on refining those goals through the winter and obviously bringing you all the recommendations and getting your input in March of 2026 to kind of develop the new three-year list of goals and projects. And we'll obviously continue doing the annual budget adoption throughout and hopefully taking off the things that make us a great place to be. So without taking any questions.
Question. Take us while, get through all this paper.
And I just want to appreciate the staff who has the information.
Appreciate these summaries that you gave us today.
Yeah, staff has done a great job putting all the information in there.
This is very helpful.
Thank you. Okay. Angie, DEI update?
Good afternoon. I want to just provide a very brief update on the DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion legislation and executive orders. So just as a bit of review, as we know, in early January or early 2025, primarily end of January, early February, some executive orders were adopted by President Trump to address diversity, equity, and inclusion in federal government and among funding and private, even down to private corporations and educational institutions. And so the first one, it was to end illegal discrimination and restoring merit-based opportunity. And primarily, it did three things: terminate DEI in federal departments and agencies, enforce civil rights laws, and combat illegal private sector DEI preferences, mandates, policies, programs, and activities. And third, to require certification that grantees and contractors do not operate programs promoting DEI that violate anti-discrimination laws and their compliance with federal anti-discrimination laws is material to the contract. And that's the one that really affects us as a local government the most because we receive federal funding. And so new federal funding opportunities are including a certification that the city has to make to the federal government, saying that we don't have and won't have any kind of DEI programs and activities. And then the government relies on that in giving us the grant funds. And if we then have programs, DEI programs, having made that certification, it can subject us to liability under an act called the False Claims Act, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. But that is the one that hits home with the city as far as, because as you know, the city, we rely on a lot of federal funding. And so there are a lot of issues just from a legal standpoint with the executive orders, but so far, they have withstood some judicial challenges. The first thing is that there's no clear definition in there of what a DEI program is. It's very broad and even though it doesn't have the force of law, it still has very serious implications. But there have been some things and documents that have come down to provide a little bit of guidance as far as what that DEI might mean. So for instance, you may have read about the EEOC sending out letters to about 20 major law firms in the United States investigating their practices. And they said in that letter that telling recruiting committees or recruiting firms that you want diverse candidates, just doing that is considered unlawful discriminatory DEI practices in the administration's opinion. So it's somewhat hard to pin down and to know what your obligations are to comply for federal funding purposes based on the broad language of the executive order. There were two others, directs federal agencies to end equity-related grants or contracts. So you've probably read in the news or heard on the news about educational institutions who have lost funding based on some of their equity programs. And then last, and this is a pretty big one too, restoring equality of opportunity and meritocracy. It seeks to eliminate the use of the disparate impact theory of discrimination, which are unintentional violations of anti-discrimination laws. So in layman's terms, that means if we do something as a city government that ends up having a discriminatory impact, even though we didn't mean to discriminate, you can still be held liable for that. But this executive order directs the federal agencies not to seek enforcement of that particular provision and to only go after intentional discrimination. So subsequently, there have been some memos and other action taken by the federal government. So in February, a memo was handed down from the U.S. Office of Personal Management directed to all the federal agencies to provide a little bit more guidance. And it said unlawful discrimination related to DEI includes taking action motivated in whole or in part by protected characteristics. So if you're making decisions in considering somebody's protected characteristics like race, color, national origin, things like that, then that is going to be considered to be unlawful discrimination. So for example, diversity requirements for hiring panels, or if you wanted to have a diverse candidate pool, any type of preference like that, they're going to consider to be a violation. Excuse me. And then in April of this year, 24, 2025, we got a letter from the US DOT that basically again said that all recipients of US DOT funding are prohibited from engaging in discriminatory actions, program activities. Whether or not described in neutral terms in a policy program or activity that is premised on a prohibited classification, including discriminatory policies or practices designed to achieve so-called DEI goals, they're going to presume, that's presumptively going to be a violation of federal law and a breach of your grant agreement. And then last, just in May, there was a memo put out by the attorney, deputy attorney general. They are implementing something called the Civil Rights Fraud Initiative. And what they're doing is they're using the False Claims Act to investigate and pursue claims against any recipient of federal funds that knowingly violates federal civil rights laws. So that certification that I was talking about, that they're putting in all the grants, if we make that certification, and then they received a complaint and they investigated and determined that we did have a DEI program such that that certification was false, we could be subject to litigation and have to pay back three times the amount of the grant or whatever we had spent and could have civil penalties imposed against us. So are there any questions about the federal, federal executive orders? So as far as the state is concerned, House Bill 171 has received some attention, but it's been advertised as affecting only state government and prohibiting DEI in state government, but in truth, it is also directed at local governments. And it does, it says you can't use state funds or any public money to promote, support, fund, implement, or maintain DEI initiatives or programs. And it does have a definition in it. So it's a little bit, you know, more narrowly written, not quite so broad as the executive orders, but the difference is. But the difference is this would be law. This would be law, have force and effective law. But the definition says it's anything designed or implemented to promote either differential treatment or providing special benefits to individuals on the basis of race, sex, color, ethnicity, nationality, country of origin, or sexual orientation, or to a difference in policy, practice, or action that impairs equal access to opportunities or benefits based on a protected characteristic. So it has some pretty stiff penalties in it. It has a $10,000 civil penalty per violation, and that could be against individuals, not just the city, plus personal liability for damages suffered by a local government as a result. And then also removal from office. This bill requires that an annual report be made to the state auditor on what activities that the city did to remove DEI and comply with this law. And then the state auditor would conduct compliance audits. And it provides individuals with a cause of action if they feel like that they've been subjected to an illegal DEI initiative. Yes?
Will you explain the personal liability piece?
So yes, so if an individual, like, it can subject some of our employees to personal liability as well as if the city were to suffer damages as a result of the actions of that individual, that individual could be held personally liable for those actions and not just the city. Okay?
Meaning that they could have... What would the personal liability look like?
Money damages. Money damages. So I mean, it could be if the city got sued for something, you know, for some sort of DEI program. Somebody said, "I was discriminated against as a result of a DEI program." And they sued, and the city had to pay money. Then that person that actually carried out that program could be individually liable for that.
Thanks.
So if you look at the very top, this has actually been ratified. It's been passed by both the House and the Senate. But it was vetoed on July 3rd of this year. And so since the executive order came out and all of this, you know, has gained such momentum, staff has been undergoing an audit of the city's policies and plans and activities to identify things that could potentially be in violation of either the executive order or the statute. But, and as you know, the meetings of our DI committee have been suspended until we know what is going to happen, primarily at the state level. Because as I said, this is going to have the force and effective law if the veto gets overturned. And so I just wanted to update you on kind of why things seem to be stalled a little bit, just because we're waiting to see what we're going to have to comply with. Already, we have, as far as some grants go, we already have retooled, redid a few smaller grants to comply. But we will be bringing back policy amendments and things like that for you all to consider, even in light of the executive orders. But as you know, if this is the effective law, then we're mandated to comply. You really don't have a choice. You know, you risk the funding under the executive orders, which is very serious. But if it's law, then we're mandated to comply. So I understand that tomorrow, these bills are going to be on calendars for the legislature, our state legislature. But they would need a two-thirds majority in both houses to overturn. And they just, they lack that in the House by one vote. So they can pull it off the calendar if need be until they have the votes to overturn. And they have, I believe, until the end of 2026 to actually succeed out of veto. So, you know, we really, right now, it's not well yet. But if the veto is overturned, it would be. Are there any other questions? Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay. Now we'll be hearing from Jamie and Chief Mahan about towing of vehicles prior to special events.
Hello, good afternoon. So the Downtown Advisory Board has requested a review of the towing policy for special events. They brought it to the board back in November of last year. And we've met, as well as our subcommittee, Economic Vitality Subcommittee, with Lieutenant Cantwell. And I've had several meetings on that. And they have a few recommendations. And ultimately, staff had wanted to make sure that was brought before city council because that would be more of a policy decision. Some of the primary issues that they've raised were when the street is closed for special events midday, particularly during the lunch hour or midday when it's busy. It kind of cuts off business, and that's a problem for them. Also, a concern that they had raised was typically, in order to not tow people, we'll have the police department or police officer go up and down the street with their speaker just to let people know that towing would be occurring if they don't move their vehicle. And that was something that our downtown board and Main Street businesses did not like. They also noted that people were not moving their vehicle at the time that towing is designated on the sign. So if it says 1 o'clock, they had said that people are just waiting until they see a tow truck come and then moving their car. And then also that the length of time between the street closure and when vendors load in for events is too long. Just that, the length of time between things actually happening. And I would note that that's probably a bigger issue for the Christmas parade because for the other events, the streets close down, it gets cleared out, and then vendors come in. But for the Christmas parade, there's not vendors coming in. So it's closed down without like activity happening. So through those meetings, we did do a little bit of a, between Lieutenant Cantwell and I, we did a rundown of what the current process is for towing and street closures for the events. And if I miss anything, just let me know. Or feel free to chime in. I've got it here, but if you, because this is from our meetings. So first of all, we do significant notification on what time the streets close. We do press releases, social media. We do a pop-up notification on the park mobile app. We place signs on all of the kiosks for parking on Main Street. We put sandwich boards on the corners of prominent areas for big events. We do a newsletter to downtown businesses that includes street closure information. And we hand out physical newsletters about four or five times a year that have the dates of street closures. And we do a text alert for when street closures are. The night before an event, the night shift with police department will put out signs on each block that have, the ones where the cones that have like no parking after 1 o'clock or whatever the time is for the particular event. In the morning of the event, police will call a tow company and notify them of the timing. The previous process had been, if the sign said no parking after 1, they would tell the tow company to arrive by 1:15 and begin towing by 1:30. So a 30-minute period after the signage was up. We also start to do a soft closure at that time. So again, if it was 1 o'clock, we'll start closing inbound lanes at 1 o'clock to be a visual cue to close or to not allow vehicles in. Vehicles parked after the advertised time for street closures are subject to tickets for the first 30 minutes and then towed after. But there are issues about when, that can arise with the tow company maybe not being available. There's not a guarantee that the tow truck will arrive because they might be caught to a wreck or something else. Then the tow driver, and this might be where you might need to chime in, they'll take them to the maintenance lot. Is that correct?
And there's a couple, a couple of changes have happened in the past couple of weeks on the towing. Yes, when we do tow a vehicle, it's usually to City Ops parking lot instead of their storage yard because their storage yards are all over the county, and most of the cars that we're towing are out of state. So we don't want them to have to try to call rides or whatever. So when we tow, we usually tow to City Ops. I was able to work out a plan today with a tow company that is guaranteeing me two trucks on every event as long as I notify them 24 hours ahead of time. I don't know how that's going to pan out, but I know it's a step in the right direction. The 30-minute grace period, we kind of were doing as a courtesy as to not towing because they are mostly out-of-state vehicles that are up here on Main Street for the day. So we're really trying to give that 30 minutes for people to see us on Main Street, see us starting to pull barricades instead of just towing right at the time. And there's, the businesses were adamant that we just start towing at the time that the sign says. So, but yes, what Jamie was saying is correct. We are towing down to City Ops.
And so then if it's one tow truck or two tow trucks, that tow truck will take it there, and the tow has to stay with the vehicle until it's picked up, correct?
They usually send a third person to sit in the parking lot where the vehicle is because if we don't, then the owner's just going to walk down there and jump in a car and take off. And some companies are out of money.
Yeah, so we're limited, that's basically to say that we're limited in a number of tow vehicles that can be there, or how it's been currently. And like he said, there's, it tends to be out-of-town people. And so a police officer oftentimes, if they're disabled or don't know where they're going, they'll give them a ride, which is pretty good customer service, I think. So then the street gets closed down with water barricades being filled with police, Public Works, and the Fire Department helping with that. So then after all vehicles are cleared and the event perimeter, so if it's all of Main Street, is designated clear of vehicles, that's when vendors can arrive in for setup. So it takes about two hours for Main Street to get fully closed to then allow vendors to come in. And a lot of times it varies for events. But this particular item did come up after Treat Street last year because that's an event where the street's closed and then the event happens at the end of the day. Where, so there's a very short turnaround time for vendor, the street to get cleared, vendors to get in, and then we have kids and families coming an hour before the event even is supposed to begin. So it's just a really big matter of safety for that. And then, as you all know, with our barricades and everything we've talked about for a while on that and our new barricades, we're very strongly, very strongly important that no vehicles are in the perimeter of the event whenever the event actually starts. So then with all of that being said, I'm going to tell you what the downtown board has recommended and then some of the changes that we've already kind of made for that, from Garden Jubilee, that may have impacted some of that or supported it. So first, that they had recommended that we start towing immediately at the time no parking is advertised. So for example, if the sign says no parking at 1 o'clock, a tow truck is there towing the first car at 1:01. They would like to incentivize or expedite tow company response time going to the issue with the tow drivers or tow trucks availability. So currently, there's no incentive for tow companies to tow for events, over towing for car accidents or other purposes. So they said, knowing that this could have legal issues to work out, they'd suggest looking into some way of a guarantee or incentive for tow companies that will reduce the risk of not having a tow available in a timely manner. Or that the city could contract with the tow company for yearly event towing. So there is an incentive or guarantee. Or that the city could pay the tow fee, keep the vehicle at the maintenance lot, and then release the driver. So that goes to the issue of the tow company having someone at the maintenance lot. The other thing that they had recommended, which this was back in January, was prioritizing replacing the water barricades with the vehicle rated modular barricades. So those are the ones that we've gotten. And just to note that whenever that was prioritized in January, we had thought that might make things a little quicker to close the street down. But then now with the implementation of it, it does not. There's more resources that need to go into getting those in place than we thought that there would be. So then with all of that being said, we've been looking, talking about this for a while now. And with Garden Jubilee, we didn't. Are you going to talk through a little how Garden Jubilee went?
Yeah, I like to use Garden Jubilee as an example because it was probably the smoothest and the quickest we've ever closed down Main Street. And it still is an hour and 38 minutes. There was at least 15 up there, 15 people up there with us, from Public Works, from Fire, from Water, and from the PD. There was no less than 15 up there. And it took us an hour and 38 minutes. And at the hour and 38-minute mark, I had made a note that all the barricades were in place, but they weren't filled with water. So the footprint was softly established, but it wasn't a hardened barricade. Although the water on the west side was still being filled at an hour and 38 minutes. And that was the absolute smoothest that I had seen Main Street get shut down. And it's still at an hour and 38 minutes. So you know, for an event like Garden Jubilee, you have two hours for loading, two hours for, to establish the footprint. I mean, it is, it's four hours before the event even starts. And I think that was where the business owners were getting frustrated, and I understand. And like Jamie said, we met in January, and I tried my best to explain the whole process. And I told her where, told them where we were having problems. And some of that was with two tow trucks. And that didn't, that really didn't get rid, well, we won't see if it's resolved until next Friday. I think it's our next event for the car show. But I think I have worked something out with the tow company that will expedite it a little. But we're towing on average between three and four cars per event. Really not that bad. But we don't, we don't like towing cars at all because it's, it creates a little bit more work for us because I'm not going to just tell an elderly lady that her vehicle is three blocks away and not take her down there. So it takes one of my guys off of Main Street that's helping set up to take her down to her car. So towing is not our first option, but it, it's, I mean, it's a necessity. We need to get it done, and we need to get it done expediently to get the footprint established. Every vehicle, if I had to tow one vehicle, it's usually between 15 and 20 minutes before that truck can be back up on Main Street. So if I have, if I'm towing four vehicles, you can see how that time is, you know, is cutting into what it takes us to establish the footprint. But Garden Jubilee was absolutely, hands down, the smoothest shutdown of Main Street, and it was at an hour and 38 minutes.
Do you have any questions on anything in particular with it?
Am I understanding right that the ask from downtown businesses is just right now to eliminate the 30-minute grace period? Because there's not a whole lot else that can be done.
We did that. We listened, and since January, since that meeting, we didn't give the 30-minute grace period. And that wasn't written down anywhere. That's just something that we usually did just because we don't like to tow. We thought we were doing the right thing by people. It turns out, they'd rather just tow at the time on the sign. So, but it did not cut down on the time any.
Yeah, and I think that their suggestion for a solution is to have more tow trucks there. And Councilwoman Simpson has been part of some of those meetings. So I'm not sure if you interpreted anything different than I have.
No, I mean, that seems like it could be a solution to cut down on some time. But honestly, like, there's really not a lot that they can do to cut down on the time. I feel like they have spent too much time on this conversation, to be totally honest. Because there's only so much we can do. I mean, we have to set up the barricades. We have to make the street safe. The tow company has to do what they have to do. I mean, it sounds, I did, one of the things I had suggested was trying to get with the tow company to guarantee them to have trucks.
I think I have that. I think I have. But that's yet to be seen because that was just, that was kind of set in stone today. So the next event will be the Tell-Tow for that.
Yeah, and we'll see if that actually gets saved in time.
When we, is, you know, tow companies are, they're very hesitant to send two trucks up there just to sit with no guarantee of even towing up here.
Right.
So it's hard for them to sit and deadhead for two hours and not get paid. But I, keep my fingers crossed, I think I have something, I haven't it worked out. We'll see. I think I have something, I haven't it worked out, we'll see. But I don't think it's gonna substantially cut down on the time.
I don't think so, I mean, I, just from listening to them, I mean, obviously in their ideal world, we'd be able to close the street down an hour before and everything would be done. That's not feasible.
Yeah, kinda sounds like every, every available option has been pursued, yes.
Yeah, but we've tried, one thing that they did bring up was that, I, I know they asked, any like street closure between twelve and two, they really would like to start shutting Main Street down after two. Anything before two, you know, it's, I mean, it's their big hours, ten, ten, or twelve to, to two is, is the big hours. So, maybe that's something we look at is, is, is when we start, is trying to push all of our street closures down to after two o'clock at least.
Yeah, and that was kinda their, their tipping point was um for Treat Street. Um, but with the extent of what needs to be loaded in there, and then with the amount of people that are coming in to the street while, like, while there's still vendors coming in and out, the, the safety issue of that, where, you know, if, if Treat Street's on Halloween every year, it's gonna be either on a weekday or like if there's not a different day of the week that it'll be on, it'll be whatever day the thirty-first falls on. Um, so that, that's really the only one where it closes midday at an earlier time. I will say that the ones that they, they're particularly sensitive about are Treat Street and the Christmas Parade. Um, and, and they, they seem to not be as um concerned when it's Gungublee, Apple Festival, or even Art Domain, because they know that the, the people coming in. Um, and those do close the street a little bit later in the day.
Do we keep track of complaints made about towing companies to damages to people's cars that they're towing and adverse encounters with towing companies so that we do not continue utilizing those tow companies?
We, we do, so we, we have, any tow company that we use on our next rotation record program has to apply to the department, we do records checks on all of their drivers, and we keep complaints on, um, you know, things that you, you recommended. And so we, we reserve the right to remove someone, and we have removed tow companies from our rotation list in the past. Um, I don't, I don't, I'd have to look and tell you exactly who, who is on it and who's not, but we do keep track of all of that stuff. Cause again, the biggest thing, we wanna make sure we provide good customer service. We don't wanna be calling tow companies that are, you know, tearing people's stuff up. We, you know, and, you know, with respect to towing downtown, you know, it's, we try to find the people whose cars are registered there, but they got South Carolina plate on them or a Florida plate, which is a lot of times that we, you know, obviously that's gonna come back to wherever that, that car's registered in that state, so it's very difficult for us to find. And, and, you know, it was in my direction that staff gave some leeway for people, because we didn't want to just immediately start towing, because it's a big deal, it's a big expense on people. And we were trying to uh, you know, give a little bit of grace period while we were doing some other things. But, you know, my experience over, over my career, two hours is a, is generally the time it takes to safely lock down a, a footprint of an, of an area, you know, regardless of whether or not we have, you know, any vehicles to tow or not. So it's, it's been pretty common, I think. It gives us, it gives us a little bit of a, of a cushion to make sure we can get everything done in time.
There are some tow companies associated with some of the private pay lots that are, they seem to have some sort of a deal worked out with the managers of those private pay lots that I have heard lots of complaints about. Um, so I just wanna make sure that we do not utilize them ever.
It is not.
Thank you.
And that is one thing that I've, we discussed at length.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thanks for the update on that. Right, uh Patent Pool and Whitmire Center.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, State Council. I wanted to uh take a few minutes this afternoon and talk about some of the concepts that have been presented to the public in the last week with the uh, the Whitmire Center and Patent Park and Pool. Um, we're gonna talk about some of the community engagement that's been done, um, give a brief overview of each concept, and then provide some costs, uh numbers associated with each. So, in getting here, our design team uh, uh came to the City Council Retreat on Feb- uh, February twenty-eighth, just to go over overall project goals uh for this project. We had our first sort of community engagement stakeholder meetings on May nineteenth. Um, and the, the first uh community engagement meeting was then as well with about a hundred and five participants. We also had an online survey from May twelfth to May twenty-third. Um, had a lot of participation in that. Uh, then we had the second community engagement uh meeting last week on the fifteenth, and had between two sessions, maybe about a hundred and fifty folks there uh providing feedback and um, uh reviewing a similar presentation to what I'm talking about tonight. Um, some of the input we, specifically with Whit- uh Whitmire, we got a lot of comments on the, the flexible space that was proposed. And for Patent Pool, a lot of comments on sort of indoor swimming versus outdoor swimming. A few, few others, others as well, we're, we're still working through some of the feedback we've gotten from that meeting. And overall, some of the feedback from either our stakeholder meetings or the first community engagement meeting, or our online survey for park ideas, uh has been a, been a big emphasis on playgrounds and publicly accessible restrooms, especially when, with tying into our trail networks. Um, a lot of emphasis on interaction with natural features and walking trails, and again, playgrounds and walking trails for the online survey as well. Um, when looking at some of the community center feedback, um, a lot of, a lot of ideas about accessibility and uh, you know, to use space, um, ideas around classrooms and um, uh multipurpose rooms as well. And then for aquatics, um stakeholders talking about twenty-five yard competition lanes to support uh high school swimming teams. Um, um, a lot of discussion about splash pad, also zero-depth entry as well. So just a brief overview of what's existing on site, the Whitmire Activity Center. With Tom's Park, it's about two and a half acres, fifty parking spots. There's a thirty-two-hundred square foot large flexible space that's uh usually used for Bridge Club. Um, and the overall footprint is about eighty-two hundred square feet. The Patent Park, a little bit bigger site, about eighteen acres, currently has about a hundred and forty-five parking spots. Forty-seven thousand square feet for uh the pool. About seven thousand square feet of support buildings for the pool. Currently, an eighty-meter, eight-lane outdoor pool with a diving board. Um, I think it's normally open ten to twelve weeks a year. Um, there's also a small outdoor kiddie pool and playground, and a few other park amenities as well. So the first concept, it's Concept One A, is a new Whitmire Community Center. Um, and shown here is a bit of a idea of how the space could, could be layout. Um, um, and on the right side are some general square footages for some of the spaces. Um, the largest space here would be a medium-sized flex space, about thirty-five hundred square feet, which is a little larger than the existing thirty-two-hundred square feet footprint of the uh, the large room in, in Whitmire. And also dedicated storage for that space for all the different activities that could be uh taking place there. If, if there's more of a, a sports focus, you know, I think this could also accommodate about a half, half of a basketball court, um, but also many other, um, many other programs as well. It's also for any sort of educational classes, a small classroom at about three hundred square feet and several different rooms where the community can come in and use them, whether it be a party room with a warming kitchen, or um, um, another smaller multipurpose room as well. Um, so the big note on here, right, this is a entirely new structure um, on the footprint of, of the existing Whitmire Activity Center. For the site overall, uh we can see in the middle there labeled Community Center is the footprint of the inside we were just looking at. Um, and next to it would be publicly accessible restrooms uh for maybe trail users, also a playground. Um, the other, across the creek, there's the idea there for a flexible lawn and informal stage, and the land sort of slopes down to that stage, so it could be a nice seating area. Um, and enough, enough parking as well. So this is still One A. Moving on to One B, One B proposes moving the Whitmire Center to another location, um, potentially Patent Park, which we'll see later. Um, but this One B park expansion changes some of the programming in this space for more outdoor, um, um, outdoor items such as a flexible lawn. Um, it moves the parking around a little bit, also provides an expanded playground, um, and a picnic area and shelter. So moving on from Whitmire, the first Patent uh, uh concept, this is Two A. That would be a fifty-meter indoor pool that would be able to host swimming competitions. Um, the overall footprint of this is roughly similar to Patent Pool existing with all its support buildings. And uh, it'd be a little larger, around seventy-one thousand square feet. This does have the indoor fifty-meter pool, uh also a five-lane warm water wellness pool that could be used for uh warming up for competition or programmed for more warm water activities. Also would include, uh, not, not shown in the figure, would be an event space and concessions and other miscellaneous support spaces to go along with it. In the site itself, one general theme as we start thinking about putting larger buildings and structures on the Patent Site, which the indoor fifty-meter center is shown there in the bottom right, um, is parking starts to need to expand a little bit to accommodate that, and things need to start moving around the site. Maybe some of the open space has to accommodate different, different items. Uh, one big note here is the current dog park, formerly the, the baseball field, would be used for flood mitigation. Um, if, if, if we build a large structure on the site, flood mitigation is something that will be needed to get it permitted to construct. Um, but o- other items on the site would include uh potentially a pump track, new playground. Um, there'll be things to think about as far as, you know, basketball courts and how to move all that stuff around. But there is a room, a room for it in this option. So this is still Two A, this is the fifty-meter indoor pool. Uh, yes.
Um, is there a pump track at Jackson Park still?
I think it was damaged, if any.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was damaged, I don't know if it's back online.
I emailed.
It's still being used, but the fence is.
I emailed them this morning, the county manager and the Parks and Rec Director, to just understand what their, that future intent was for their pump track. Um, just because it would be less ideal to have two pump tracks within, you know, a mile of each other. But I haven't gotten a response yet, but.
Yeah, some of the input we got, just cause cycling overall is such a big part of this community, including, I mean, not just the uh different trails, but mountain biking too. Um, that even having, uh, if, if there wasn't for two, you could have sort of two different levels of them as well. Some of the discussions around this would be, is it, I think there's some sort of harder surface they can use for a pump track that's less maintenance, and uh.
Yeah, they use like a limestone, I understand.
Sure, and I think there's even some sort of paved, paved ones, although I'm not.
Yeah, for their turning, reduces the new pavement, okay.
So if we move to Two B, this one has a bit more going on, on the inside, and kinda has three, three parts. The first part on the left is a community center with programming that could have been moved from, from the uh Whitmire site. So this might uh go well with the uh park option at Whitmire. It does have a large flexible space that's a bit bigger um than what's being proposed at Whitmire, about seven thousand square feet. Uh, this could accommodate a full basketball court. Uh, also a few classrooms, multipurpose rooms, concessions, and support spaces to go along with, with those. Um, on the indoor aquatic side, there's a, uh, shown a twenty-five yard indoor pool that would be probably about ten, ten or more swimming lanes uh with a smaller warm water wellness or, or warm-up pool. Um, this space would be able to host um high school swimming competitions, um, so it would have the stadium seating as well. Um, and then the third portion of this would be an outdoor portion. It'd be a outdoor pool for uh, uh, outdoor recreation. Um, sort of the fun-in-the-sun use of pools. Um, so that would be, uh, have zero-depth im- entry, some splash features, um, um, as well as maybe a few different options of what, what to do that uh there with maybe a lazy river, just a few different ideas and, and, and a lot of shade features. We've heard a lot about a lack of shade at the current Patent Pools, we wanna incorporate that as well. Uh, two big differences between Two A and Two B, right, are, are the outdoor aquatics, right, or the recreational aquatics and the, and the community center. Also the size, um, quite a bit larger, takes up quite a bit more space. We see the difference here as the, the increase in parking space, right? We've, we've had to move the, the skate park to accommodate this as well. Um, and move that over to maybe formerly some green space. Um, also, there'll have to be some flood mitigation options on site. So, again, as we put larger and larger um structures here, um, it kind of starts to feel less like a, like a park, right, with less, less of those options. So this is the four, right, the One A, One B, Two A, Two B that we've gone over. Um, the, the big new update for today would be pricing associated with each. Um, so for One A, for a new community center, right, we're looking at about five to eight million dollars. This would be just, just for the building, these are also very rough numbers, sort of based off square footages. Um, park expansion just include trail restrooms, so those are much smaller structures, five hundred to eight hundred thousand. Um, so that's Whitmire uh with the One A and One B. For Patent, um, for the fifty-meter indoor pool, um, the cost was about thirty-five to forty-five million dollars, rough costs. Um, and that's again looking, looking at the structure, not necessarily all the flood mitigation and the different park features. And then for the twenty-five yard indoor pool, it also had the community center and the outdoor pool, probably the largest, right, the largest footprint of, of all of them, forty-five um to sixty million dollars. So looking at some of these numbers and reviewing some of these concepts, I guess I'd ask if there's any um, uh, input uh for moving forward with the project.
One thing I'd like to add in is, you know, we presented the budget concept, you know, fifteen to, to twenty million dollar estimated availability of funds from a city tax-based perspective, right? That's kinda what we talked about at a tax rate around fifty to fifty-two cents at the future rebal. Uh, where we are now, we're a little bit lower. We do know we qualify for FEMA public assistance funds to build it back as is. There's also a layer of hazard mitigation funding that would be funding to mitigate the hazard for future damages, right? So we're submitting for the costs it would take to elevate the structure, right? Which is not insignificant, so there's portions of FEMA money out there. We spoke about it this morning with our consultants, and we do think. And we do think we might have some idea around what estimates and obligations might be this fall, this winter. So it might not be ready for your all's decision-making at the September mid-month meeting. But we should be closer to understanding what that help might look like. Um so I want to make sure that layer is included in here. We've got about fifteen to twenty million in capacity from a city perspective, probably closer to fifteen. And then we have FEMA money and then obviously there's other options of grants and other capital campaigns, so.
Right, well, let me have a discussion with the county about them um helping with the funding of these facilities.
What we've heard to this point is they don't have funding capacity to assist with these projects.
Okay.
Is the existing condition of Whitmire at this point that it's more cost effective to demo and rebuild? Or is there a restoration option or what's that looking like?
Good question. So we have um also updated costs for Whitmire, the cost to repair. Um um potentially lift up out of the floodplain a little bit. Um be maybe in the three to four million dollar range.
Okay.
So that sort of investment compared to the new center. They're similar.
So with one of the plans you said we would have to um move the baseball field, right? Was it gonna move over to Berkeley? So we moved out of the.
Well, it's not a baseball field anyways right now. It's a dog park now.
A dog park, yeah, but.
Not official.
Teams. So some teams have.
It's a field.
That's also just an idea, but there will need to be some sort of. So for a something to be constructed back in that area, right, it was flooded. So we're going to want to show to FEMA that we're going to make an effort to take it out of the floodplain and will need to be filled up. Which will have an impact on 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 the floodplain. Um there will need to kind of have to make up for that somewhere else. So there'll need to be some mitigation features.
Do we have this presentation? Like, was it sent to us, this presentation?
We will send it to you.
I think we got we got something.
We got something that was similar to this.
I don't remember exactly.
Someone this is updated.
Yeah, it didn't have the costs at all in it.
Yeah.
Right.
Um do we have any cost and estimates of to be without the community center portion of it?
We don't.
Just the aquatics part portion of it compared that plus one A.
Right.
What was the square footage, Richard, on the community center and two B?
Um I don't I know I have the square footage.
It was in there.
Seven, twenty.
That was for the flex space, twenty, pretty big, so it is relatively large, you can probably reduce the cost down. Uh and I I I can look to see if I have a number that would answer that question. I don't have it on me.
So seven point eight million based on their last number to. Twelve and a half million. That's based on the numbers they're using for their price per square foot, so eight to twelve and a half.
Was there a gauge on at the public input meeting last week about what people want preferred? Were there like ways to track? Did people vote?
Did you get a vote?
Yeah, they did. With the stickers.
For the stickers, for example, the overall majority of the stickers was put on option one A. Everyone was given one sticker and asked to vote for one of the four options.
Okay.
Interesting.
Okay.
So a lot of folks were pretty motivated by the flexible space.
Well, there was a large population of.
A bridge.
Maybe it was a skid.
Bridge players.
A skid.
But if we look at, for example, two A versus two B. Um the sort of sticker economy was that two A was, I think, about twenty-eight votes, which was the indoor aquatics. And two B was about uh thirteen votes. So similar-ish order of magnitude, if we look at the online survey results, we've had a lot of participants in. It's maybe more of a fifty-fifty split between that indoor-outdoor.
So I'm trying to remember when the support our swimmers people came and talked to us about the pool size. And they were not, they wanted a pool that was bigger than what we have, right? Well, currently Patton is fifty meters, no, isn't it?
Oh, sorry, yes, the outer pool, yeah.
Yeah, but they wanted.
Fifty.
They wanted fifty, okay.
Indoor.
Okay.
So Patton is currently.
It's part of swimming, swim teams and competition.
And we have depth issues for dive stands. We have other issues that don't allow them to use it competitively.
Right, right, it's not the size.
Right.
Technically. So the twenty-five yard pool, we could still use for high school stuff. What does it get us when we get to fifty meters? Like, what's the difference as far as like hosting competi- I don't know nothing about swimming, so.
So when you're swimming, like the events are fifty meters, hundred meters, two hundred meters. So when every time you add an additional turn, so a twenty-five meter pool, basically you're doing two extra turns or twenty-five yard pool.
Okay.
So then that adds time, so then when people or athletes are qualifying for actual real competi- I don't want to say real competition, but. Um then that is the type of pool that they're scored in and they're actually timed in. So like people's fifty meter swim is about the same time all the time. In a twenty-five yard pool, it's gonna be very different because of the extra turns. And so that's the difference and they, the swimmer and the swimming group feels they would be able to host. And attract more swimming events due to having a fifty meter pool. Um also, the closest fifty meter pool, competition pool, is in Charlotte. There's no fifty meter pool in western North Carolina at all. Um and so that would enable that location to facilitate regionals and higher level swim meets. Um that most people have to travel and stay in hotels and use restaurants for. Also with a fifty meter pool, they can divide it also, so they can put the blocks in, right? Um that then divides it up so that twenty-five or at least half of the pool can be utilized for other things. Swim parties, swim lessons, you know, whatever. Uh so there's, that's the only difference basically.
Will you show us two A again?
Is there a high demand for competitive swimming and is it?
I mean, it sounds like it.
Is it? Well, I don't know how to swim.
I mean, I know how to swim.
Well, I have a fear of water.
Oh, Linda.
No one's gonna drown me.
We're gonna talk about that later. I mean, right off the bat, I don't like the idea of no outdoor pool. I'm, that is a non-negotiable for me. There has to be some sort of splash pad outdoor component.
Absolutely.
But it seems to me like you could update Whitmire where it is, so that was one A.
A.
And then com- combine two A and two B. So that there's not a big building there, which would give us more space to do this, plus the outdoor stuff. But then I also feel like I need more time because the idea of like not having a basketball court is like probably not a great idea either. And then the pickleball people, oh man, they'll be upset. So I just, I need to like get out, I need to have craft time.
And move all the pieces around. We should, we should make like each a little thing for all of the pieces.
I need a craft.
People do use that basketball court.
They do.
I know because I walk.
That's the point of this meeting is to start getting the more value statements like you just talked about. There has to be an outdoor component. We don't expect you to be ready at this point. We wanted to provide an update to you all on, we've been out in the community stirring it up and here's what we've heard.
Okay.
And so what we're looking for today is those types of value statements of. We're comfortable with moving Whitmire around, that's that's one thing I've heard. It doesn't necessarily have to be co-located with Patton, it could stay where it is, it could be some other partnership. Um there's an importance on outdoor swimming space. And I've heard a couple of comments on twenty-five versus fifty, but I'm not sure where quite we are yet. That will probably be a money item in fact, yes.
I mean, I, but I'm also feeling like if we're gonna do this, I'm feeling very go big or go home. So I feel like we should do a fifty meter pool instead of a twenty-five. I mean, we're already gonna be so deep. Uh huh, into it that we might as well just go for it, thank you.
And that's the thing too, like, you know, we have the Y. And there has been a plan or at least talked about plan for a really long time because it's like we don't want to duplicate things. That's what else is gonna do.
Exactly.
Um but we also can't wait forever for someone to do something that they say they're gonna do. For many, 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 many years. So then that's kind of a problem too. And then also only when Melinda asked about is there like that big of a demand for swimming or whatever in the community. A lot of the issue is the capacity that we have for competition swimming. So two of our high schools don't have swim teams because there isn't capacity to have them. So um that's why they don't have them. Uh I met with uh the Chair of Henderson County um Board of Education last week. Along with the varsity uh swimming coach from West and one of the Save Our Swimmers people. And he was explaining to us, um Blair Craven was explaining to us, that's why they don't have the swim teams. Because they don't have a place for them to go. Um and he grew up swimming um and learned how to swim through a program at the Boys and Girls Club. Which I think would be fantastic to be able to bring them in. We started this Safety Around Water Program, but uh we have interest in expanding that program. Because we're giving free Safety Around Water to all second graders in Henderson County. But then there's obviously like a large gap of who hasn't gotten access to that. And then, you know, let's face it, there are a lot of kids in this community who do not get access to swimming. Because um they don't have memberships to fancy pools and country clubs. And I've heard several people talk about, well, you can join the Y if you take them your paycheck stub, then they'll give you a discounted rate. Well, teachers uh are telling me even with their paycheck stubs, they make too much money to really get a good discount. And they can't afford to join the Y. And so I don't want to not have a public pool because I think that's really important. But and in our minority community specifically, that was why I started like the Safety Around Water Program. Was because we had young minority kids drowning and at a significantly higher rate. And then when you talk to them, like some of their parents don't swim, you know, and it's it's just a generational thing. And so I feel like we have an opportunity to shape our community and give people access to things that they haven't had access to in the past. And, you know, I just think it opens up a whole world of different experiences for people. To be able to have competition or at least getting somebody involved in an activity that they wouldn't have been exposed to.
I can go either way on the twenty-five versus fifty. Um um but I just think having the communities building there as well is just going to be too overwhelming for Patton Park. Uh losing a lot of green space to some of this other stuff. Parking, if there are events going on, you know, where are people gonna park if they kind of run out of room there? I just, I think we're trying to, it would be putting too much in one area.
Great, yeah, you're allowed to.
Yeah, and I think it's, I think it's a good idea to keep it on that other side of town too.
Yeah, make some opportunities out there.
And one thing we have heard is the Opportunity House redevelopment with Carolina Village might have some opportunities for community spaces. So that's certainly something we want to explore going forward. Uh just want to make sure I capture this too. I've heard basketball courts are important, the skate park we've heard is important. Shuffleboard is important. I want to make sure we're making sure with those existing amenities, we're paying attention to those as well, so.
Yeah.
If I say anything wrong, tell me.
I don't want to lose anything.
Okay.
Yeah, skate parks, skate parks super important.
This is such a fun Tetris puzzle. I can't wait.
And the shared use community space that we give access to, I think is really important too.
Word to maintain that.
Everyone gets access.
Yes.
A shared use space.
Shared.
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 Loud and clear.
Have less.
That's a good idea, but the bottom line is money.
Oh, Melinda, we're in the true reality, man.
Debbie Downer over there.
I paid Melinda.
We're in the, we're in the fun part right now, the fun part. I don't want to look at that right now.
Well, that's the, that's the more cost-effective option of two that we're talking about. Balanced out with one A possibly.
Well, yeah, but see if we combine two A and two B, then it's just gonna be whatever this two B price is.
I think we've got good direction that we can take this back. And our, really our next step is we are gonna be engaging the cost estimators in this. Because we've got to get things moving on the FEMA front as well. So we will have more information for you and we likely need to do also a FEMA update for you all at a workshop in the near future.
I just want to add one thing. So we have talked about one print, one penny occupancy tax. Uh I guess it was one of the things that got lowered down. Um however, I did hear that a commissioner at their meeting last week mentioned wanting to explore the occupancy tax. Um specifically for park development. And if we can get buy-in from partners, because to do it big, really, we've got to have partners. And if we can get the school system and Henderson County to partner with us on doing something like this. And we earmark that money, that penny towards park development, then it makes this project significantly more feasible. So.
Especially for a pool that would have shared use by the system, yeah.
Right, and it's not, so I don't feel like that penny is a dead discussion. Um and I I know that Henderson County has a lot of big capital projects they're doing right now. But these projects take years and years to plan and so we're not needing them to write a check today. We need them just to commit that we want to be a part of this so that we can explore those funding options in the future. We don't, we're not asking anybody to like write us a big check right now. We're just, we need partners and we need help to do this for the community and it's not just the city of Hendersonville. That's all.
That's all.
Thank you all.
All right.
Thanks, Richard.
Thank you. Okay, couple items of new business. First is approval of a resolution accepting the Comeback Courts Grant.
It's me. Good evening. Um so last month, I think it was, you actually approved a resolution um. Uh um for a forty-five thousand dollar grant award to redo the courts at, the basketball courts at Sullivan Park, speaking basketball courts. And you approved that resolution. Since then, the um the folks that we've been working with have presented some logos. That they would like to see on the courts and on the goals. And Allison, I don't know if you're able to pull up the logo sheet?
It'll take me one second.
Sure. So um we thought it would be good to get that in front of you. So you could actually kind of uh kind of reapprove the award uh based on if you're okay with. Um and you can see, these are going to be sponsored by Dollar General and Icy Hot. This is uh Comeback uh Courts is the name of the the uh the nonprofit, so it's related to Shaquille O'Neal. And uh so this is kind of the uh the logo arrangement that you would be uh signing off on. Again, it's a forty-five thousand dollar grant to resurface the courts and put in new basketball goals. And there is a provision in there that uh our Assistant City Attorney worked out. Is that we would not be on the hook to redo the logos once um the the courts deteriorate and need to be resurfaced.
And there's no issue with us having business names on the court?
We have a sponsorship policy and you all have approved that, so that's why it's been brought to you.
How long are we required to uphold that sponsorship? Do you know? Like, is it because they did it, it just is always gonna have to be them or?
Until the court would need to be resurfaced.
Okay.
Where the goals replaced.
Where the goals replaced, right, the backboards.
So with that, I don't have anything else. If you have any questions.
Any questions about that?
Oh, okay, Madam Mayor, I'm gonna translate some, the Comeback Court. Oh, okay, Madam Mayor, I'm gonna translate, so, the Comeback Courts grant and approve the placement of sponsorship needs as shown in the provided renderings.
Yes, there are any discussion?
No.
Not those in favor of accepting the Courts grant, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it, okay, move forward with that.
Trying.
And now, is a special event permit for Splash Day?
Uh, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, so uh, uh, we had a great uh idea from Councilmember Hensley to pursue a Splash Day for the kids and families in the community uh without the access to Patton Pool. And so, our staff quickly put their heads together and uh got a plan for some fire trucks and uh have some free mini golf, free hot dogs and free Pelican snowballs out on site on Saturday, August second, from ten AM to one PM. So, uh, we'll have the the team out there, making sure it's a a fun day for kids and uh we hope the community comes out and enjoys enjoys the water. So, I want to thank the staff for putting it all together in a short time and this is just a formality to get it through the special events process.
Any questions or discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'm in the City Council, approve the Hendersonville Splash Pad special events permit.
Okay, any discussion? Not those in favor of approving Splash Day, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it, all right. Nothing else on our agenda, so we.